The, what is the date today?
September 22nd.
September 22nd, 2022, regular meeting of the Yarmouth zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Sean Igoe, I'm the chairman tonight. We have four matters on our agenda tonight. I'm gonna take this one, I think, first. Oh, I think it's first, I should say. Kathleen Patrick Butler, 133 Witchwood Road, South Yarmouth, Mass. Are they here? Would you come up to the table, please? This parcel's in an R40 zoning district and partial APD. The applicant seek a variance from Section 401-1-1 to allow a camper to be occupied as living space on their property. Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Patrick Butler.
Yeah, Butler.
My wife Kathleen.
I'm Kathleen Butler.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit about what's going on?
Yeah, so my parents, my mother and stepfather, have a trailer parked in our driveway and they've been spending the summer here. They've been trying to get housing for quite a while, trying to get on the applications. And so far, nothing available yet. And we'd just like to know what it is that you seek to get, what we need to do to get a special permit. I know we're not here to change the law or anything like that, that's a whole different hearing, but just to get a special permit, what is it that you actually need?
Okay. Well, you wouldn't qualify for a special permit, because that's something that's not permitted under the bylaw, to have a camper as a permanent living space on your property.
It's not permanent. It's a trailer that can be towed with a truck and moved.
Well, you're asking to keep it there, though, on a permanent basis?
I'm asking to allow them to stay there during the warm months until they can get a housing.
Yeah. You'd need a variance for that, that's not a permitted use.
So my question would be then, what do we need to get a variance?
Well, I don't know that we can give you a variance for that. What we have done in the past, because we do have a housing crisis on the Cape here, is we have given limited variances for a specific period of time in order for people to obtain housing. I think that's probably all we could do for tonight.
Exactly what we're asking for, yes. And of course, since it's an RV, you don't live in it in the winter anyway, so we would just be asking for, you know, months in the summer. One more month now, and then four or five months next summer if they're still on a list.
A list of, from one year to five years, waiting lists.
We, you know, with the housing, you have no idea how long the list is, of course.
Okay, alright. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna open this up for questions from the board. Dick, do you have some questions?
So right now, this, I did drive by and there's a large motor home that is being lived in, apparently. There's another motor home there too, right?
No, it's a trailer, well, motorhome trailer, it's a trailer.
Small one, yeah.
Yeah, with a truck.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess I don't have any, any questions. I mean, I'm gonna have the same concerns I'm sure the other members of the board are gonna have as to allowing this. I mean, on a very temporary basis, you know, if you needed a month or something like that, that may be something we could concur with, but I don't think next summer's gonna be part of the equation. Just because, because of the rules and how the rules are, and if we start giving relief for this, then everybody's gonna have a trailer they're living in in the yard. And that's just something I don't think the town wants to see. But I don't have any much in the way of actual questions, so I'll move it on.
Jake?
Can you tell me how long it's been there already?
The trailer itself?
Yes.
Well, it used to come and go every season, and then my parents have been getting a little older and not able to drive it back and forth to Florida. So it's been sitting there for two years, but only occupied in the summertime, this summer.
They've been using it for a while?
Just as storage, I mean, we close it up, of course, in the winter.
They've been using it for the last two summers, is that correct?
No, no, it's only been, it's been there for two summers, yes. As storage, and then this summer, they've been living in it.
This year is the first year that they've been living in it.
Yes, yes.
It's also a corner lot, and, you know, a lot of times, we have double side, we kind of can count both sides of the frontage, and it's awfully close to the frontage, too. So even though it's, you may call it tucked back, I'm concerned that it's also on the side. There's a house behind you, is that occupied at all? It looks like a tree fell in there.
No, yeah, that's been, uh, it's been empty for quite a couple, couple of years at least, at least.
It looks like it's abandoned, and...
Yeah.
I think it's in foreclosure, I know.
My husband used to own it, and then he passed away, I think, and his wife had it, and they were trying to do work on it, and I've seen his son over there dropping off trucks now and then and stuff, but I've never seen, I mean, it was rented quite a few years ago, but I haven't seen anybody in it for a couple of years now. And I put a fence up between us and them.
I noticed.
You know, so they wouldn't, you know.
I understand what you're trying to do, and I have, I have concerns about what the bylaw says, and I would be, I would be remiss to say that I would be comfortable going past a month or so, just to give people time to get something done. It just, I think, would set a bad precedent.
That's not enough.
John?
Yeah, I don't have many questions, just a comment, and I agree with these fellows, what they've already said. The issue is that if we allow one to do, I mean, this is gonna, this can be happening all over town, you know, and so then the whole town becomes a trailer park, you know. So I understand what you guys are going through, but it's, it is gonna be a difficult precedent to set.
Well, I, I thought that, I could be mistaken, I've never been to any of these, but I thought one of the reasons we have these hearings is not, we're not here to change the bylaw, that would be a whole nother argument, that we were here for a specific, one specific case, which is ours, you know. And every case is different, of course, and isn't that the reason that we have exemptions for a specific case? You know, I don't, I don't really agree with the, if we let you do it, everybody's gonna do it? That's, that's a whole nother hearing, I thought, where we would be voting on changing the whole bylaw itself. We're here for one specific case, which, you know, is about elderly couple and a vet, and my mother's disabled, and all our neighbors are here to agree that they love having, there's no, we're not putting anybody in danger at all, nobody's complaining about how it looks, you know, and, and we're trying our best to do the right thing and get them in housing and everything, and everybody knows what it's like on Cape Cod these days, and how hard it is. And believe me, I've tried every solution possible, but this is the only solution that we've seen to come up with, and nobody can come up with a solution besides this at the moment. And they might get housing by next spring. You know, you never know, you get on the right list, and all of a sudden, something pops up, and that's great. And then this is all, nobody needs it anymore, right? But to have the door closed completely on them, and where they might all of a sudden could be homeless come, you know, April and May, when they, when they would have a place to stay.
Wait a minute, but you said they won't be using it in the winter, so...
Well, you can't, because it's not winterized.
Okay, so where?
Yes, we don't know yet where they're going.
Where are they going?
We don't know. We've been, every day, we've been struggling with that answer. We have a lady here today from the VA that's been helping my stepdad, trying to figure this out and everything. Well, we don't, we can't control any of the housing. The only solution I can do is, is ahead, in case the housing doesn't work, would be next summer. So I'm just trying to fix something in the future that might, it might not happen. Just, I just don't want the door closed on something that I could actually find something to help them out. You know, to close a door that I'm capable of opening, and, you know, with everybody else's help, is, is just, I just don't, you know, that's why we're here, right?
Okay. Well, in order to qualify for a variance, you have to meet the criteria for a variance.
Okay.
Have you looked at the criteria for a variance?
That's why, my first question was, I didn't know what that was.
Well, the criteria, first of all, you have to have a hardship. The hardship has to be owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures. Now, obviously, that doesn't apply here, correct?
No, I don't, no.
No?
No.
Now, what you may also be looking for is what's called a use variance, but the problem is, it's a prohibited use. You don't qualify for a variance, so if we granted you one, it would be an illegal grant. What we have done in the past is we have granted, for instance, 90-day variances, but only for 90 days, and that's because of a hardship that we understand the housing situation.
Right.
I might suggest to the board that we could grant something like that, but I, I don't think we could grant a variance for them to stay there for a month and then go to Florida and come back and use it next summer. That's what I thought I heard you say in the beginning.
They're not going to Florida, their, their mother's handicapped, they're here, they're trying to get housing right now, and they might have a temporary.
At any rate, I don't want to speak for the others on the board, but I could support a 90-day temporary variance.
Well, that would help a lot.
If that would help you.
We could divide it up, I mean, you know, we don't want the 90 days going, doing in the winter when they're not gonna be there anyway.
90 days is from the date that we file the...
The date from your date you file.
It goes 90 days and it ends. That's the best we could do.
Right.
Or they're going to move out of this right now?
No, not at the moment.
When, when are they gonna be moving out of it, when it gets cold?
Yeah, whenever I have to, you know, winterize it, right.
Well, you...
So I would say, you know, I mean, November sometime. So 90 days would help, I mean, you never know with the weather on Cape Cod, if I have, if the minute it's too cold to leave the water on, of course, you can't live in there anymore.
What's our first hearing in January?
Supposed, January 12th. Not gonna be, um...
What does the board think about maybe continuing this matter without any findings until the January 12th hearing, predicated on them signing up 100 days?
I think I'd like to hear from the public and so forth, too.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm the case manager for the Cape and Islands Veteran Outreach Center, and I'm a fellow Air Force vet, as Mr. Byers is. He came into my office two weeks ago explaining the situation, and I guess the first thing I want to ask is for a little compassion. We know the housing market is insane. He has a case manager from Hack as well, he is doing everything that he can do. There's just no options. We are doing everything we can do. Our transitional housing is just single-room occupancies, so our hands are tied, but we are spinning the wheels. Our, the executive director, Jim Seymour, we're reaching out to a bunch of resources and trying to find a solution for this. The waitlist are years, and we can't have an elderly veteran and his sick elderly wife on the street. They have a shelter right now. I appreciate the idea of a 90-day extension that would help us hopefully secure something. There's no guarantee of that, we can't put them somewhere if there's nowhere for them to go, if there's no availability, if there's nothing out there on the market, they're on a fixed income, a very limited fixed income, with the VA disability that they do get. It's a no-win situation. They lost everything they had in Florida because of a storm. It's a sad story, and as a veteran, I just, my heart breaks for them. He served his country, and now there's little options for him. So I just implore for compassion in the situation, and the 90 days, at the very least, the 90 days would be helpful for all the resources, all the agencies, everybody that is helping him, to hopefully get something. But we can't magically make something appear that isn't out there.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone. Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Lauren Amster, we live directly across the street at 20 Larch River Road, so we look directly out at the front yard. I just wanted to say that we don't have a problem with the trailer being there. They're lovely people, they're like family now to us. We've looked across, I've lived across the street from Rick and Kathleen for 15, 16 years now, and they've become like family, and the people in the trailer are like grandparents to my children. So we don't have a problem looking at it whatsoever.
Okay.
And we actually like having it there, which sounds weird, but that's true.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this matter? Seeing none. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, and open it up.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Sure. I just had one more question. Have you explored moving the trailer to a motorhome park someplace on the Cape?
Yes, we've, I've, I've been looking at that, of course, they're all about to close in a month, too, you know, they don't...
Not open over the winter?
No, none of them are open during the winter, and when they are open, well, that's, again, not until next spring. And I've been looking at the prices and everything, and there's no way that they could afford that, you know. It's, it's like $50 a night minimum nowadays, these, for these trailer parks. Even the one Bass River behind the Car Wash, that was one of the cheapest ones, they used to stay there years ago, that's still, that's like $1,000 a month now. You know, and that, that wouldn't have, and even if, and I don't know if there's anything gonna be available, they always say, you know, call back later in the spring, we'll find out if we have any sites available for next summer. But as of right now, they're all, well, you can come for a week or so, but we're gonna close before Columbus Day. They all close up. They have the same problems, they can't leave the water on in the wintertime.
Yeah.
You know.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
What about housing off the Cape? Have you explored anything?
He's, believe me, my Pete's been, he's been, every day, spending eight hours a day besides taking care of my mother, who's, you know, handicapped and home and stuff.
Looking everywhere, yeah.
He's been, and I've been helping, I was at the Tennis Authority, Housing Authority today, Municipal Housing Authority, we've been going... I have to work, so I don't have time to go off Cape, but he's actually talked to somebody in West Bridgewater, I mean, yeah, this, you know, like, you know, like she was saying, the options is just so limited right now, and believe me, everybody's doing their best, you know.
Okay.
Nobody wants them to have to live in a trailer at their age, you know, that's, that's not, that's not their choice, you know. That's just the option at the moment, that's all. Their choice would be, great, if all of a sudden, housing came available, you know, at, at one of these housing authorities, for them to move in there, that, you know. We'd sell the trailer tomorrow if that would happen, we don't want them, you know, to have to do what they're doing, you know.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we're gonna close the board discussion.
There's a letter here, too.
Okay, this is a letter from Bill Progers of 12 Larch Arbor Road, South Yarmouth. Dear Sir or Madam, based on the information and concerns raised by the billing inspector, as well as my own, I feel that the board should deny the appeal slash petition 43, 4980. Thank you, Bill Progers. That's the only thing we have in the file. Thoughts, gentlemen?
I guess, I mean, I completely understand the concern, and I feel for the, for the veterans, especially a veteran that's worked, done for the country. But I, I can't see doing any, approving anything that would go beyond three months. I have a real problem with that. It's, it's a bylaw that we have in place for a reason, we've been asked to adhere to the bylaws and to enforce them, and, and going out beyond three, three months seems to be more than we really should be doing, so that's my, my opinion. Dick, what are your thoughts?
Well, I would concur, I think anything, any relief that has to be given has to be temporary, because it does not meet the criteria that we have to meet to, to give you a variance. And so I would have to say that. Also, in terms of location, I think, I think the bylaw still applies in terms of any kind of camping or boats, for that matter, and so what. Are supposed to be behind the front lawn of the house, right? So that's not occurring here either, because the trailer's out by the street, the side street.
Yeah, it's a side, the front of the house is on.
I know you're in a corner, which makes it more difficult.
It's kind of hard to actually determine which one is the side and the back.
To meet, to meet that particular bylaw, you'd have to be tucking it way back in further as well, you know.
Right.
You know, but I, based on the circumstances, and again, I recognize probably as well as anybody else the hardship of finding rentals these days, and that is certainly there, and in terms of getting some, some time to allow that opportunity, what will hopefully be that opportunity, I'm comfortable with that angle.
90 days. John, what are your thoughts?
I tend to agree with everyone else, I mean, it's hard to get around this bylaw, it's, it's pretty specific. But I, you know, I understand what you're going through, and, you know, if we can work something out. The, the issue is, too, that you never know, the housing could last another two, the issue could be another two years. So 90 days is only, it's not buying you much time, you know, it's, it's temporary, it's, you know, it's, but, you know, hopefully, something happens within the time, if that's what we decide to do.
Could I ask a question? With, I know we're not here to change any bylaws or anything, but does anybody know why we have this bylaw?
Well, that, that's something that you'd...
I know, I just thought that would be an answer.
We have the bylaw because it's, it's under Chapter 40A of the state statute, is the reason why we have it. It was adopted at a town meeting by the town meeting voters.
I don't mind answering that, there's a number, number of reasons, including the sewage scenario in terms of how, how that's disposed of or connected, you know, essentially, it's another bedroom or two bedrooms or whatever added to, added to a house, it's already has a certain limit to the number of bedrooms allowed for septic purposes. And, and it's also just a visual scenario that a lot of people don't like to see. See trailers and, and essentially another living unit on, on any particular property. So that's why the bylaw was done, and if, and if, and if it didn't exist, then we'd see an awful lot of mobile homes. You'd have, you could potentially have little mobile home parks all over the place, so that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, my thoughts are the same as the rest of the board. I'd be inclined to give a 90-day temporary variance. We have done it in the past, we've done it on a hardship basis, we understand the situation with the housing, but we do not have the authority to grant you what you want. That's the reason why. If we had the authority to do it, I think that, not speaking for the other board members, but I think given the hardship that we, you have, I think we would certainly consider that, but we don't.
Right.
So if that is the feeling of the board, that we would grant a 90-day variance, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll move that motion. To provide a 90-day temporary variance for the camper, is that what we call it, I guess?
RV, yeah.
The RV.
Trailer.
Trailer to remain on, on the site in its present location for 90 days.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carries four to nothing? Four to zero? A decision will be written up. Once it's written up, it'll be clocked with the town clerk, 20 days must elapse from that period, okay? This is a temporary variance, I don't think you have to take it over to the registry of deeds and record it, but it will go into effect once it is, 20 days after it is clocked with the town clerk is when your time will run. I don't know when that's going to get written, because I'm very busy and I don't know when I'm gonna be able to write that decision, so it will be when I get it written and clocked in with the town.
I understand.
Okay? So that's what we could do tonight?
Alright.
Thank you for coming in, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Alright, take care. Our next petition is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. AT&amp;T. Hi, how are you tonight? Evening, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Michael Dolan from the law firm of Brown Rudnick.
Good evening, Attorney Dolan. Could you tell us what your petition is all about tonight?
Yes, so my client, AT&amp;T, has licenses to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. AT&amp;T is proposing a small cell antenna installation on a utility pole at, on Windermere Road in order to deal with rapidly increasing demand on its network. The small cell facility will be mounted on a, on a replacement utility pole towards the end of Windermere Road, right next to a little parking, parking lot, if you will. AT&amp;T's RF engineers targeted this proposed location due to high data demands on its network. The existing macro sites that AT&amp;T has, which are the large, big antenna facilities, traditionally on telecommunications towers and water tanks and the like, aren't able to cover this area adequately. This small cell antenna can be placed on the utility pole and really fill in that little hole that they're having right there. There's a tremendous amount of usage by AT&amp;T customers in that area. The facility will consist of a small cell antenna, a fixed side-mounted to the replacement pole. With this facility, there's also a small equipment cabinet mounted to the side of the pole, as well as a electric meter shut-off below that. There's some cabling that connects them, but these are a relatively innocuous facility, similar to a transformer being attached to a utility pole, yet it has tremendous communications capabilities and public safety benefits down near the waterfront in that area. So in short, AT&amp;T with this site will be able to handle more data at faster speeds and better, with better and more reliable coverage, and we would respectfully request a special permit.
Okay, thank you. Is that gonna enhance the coverage and the reception?
Absolutely.
It is?
Yes.
Well, I think after going through this summer, I think we'd all agree that we're definitely in favor of that. I don't know if we're in favor, what are you gonna do here, but we're definitely in favor of getting some enhanced service. Okay, how big is this unit gonna be?
The antenna itself is...
Is it a fixed about halfway down the pole, is that what I'm looking at? Is it like a booster?
It, there will be a bracket that will, for side mounting, and the, the height of that will be about 26 feet where that is.
Is that what I'm looking at, right here?
Yes, that's the antenna.
So that right there, and then down, a little bit lower, maybe halfway down, is that gonna be the...
That's the equipment cabinet.
Okay.
And then right below that, which is very small, is the electric meter and shut-off.
Does that emanate any noise?
No.
No noise?
No.
Any harm to anybody, any radiation or any type of emission that it's going to emanate that would harm in any way?
We submitted with our application a RF emissions report, which demonstrates that this facility will comply with the FCC guidelines regarding RF emissions. In fact, the facility operating at its peak capacity in the most concentrated area within that location would be only a third of the FCC allowable limit, so this is way below what the AT&amp;T could do under mass and federal law.
Sorry if I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, go right ahead, yeah, thank you.
This is like the third or fourth, I think, one in the general area that you, we approved two or three already this year.
There were two before, and that were maybe in the spring, I met with you.
Two or three, because you show four on this...
Previous one, I'm sorry, I just meant the last two I did before the board, where I believe in April or May, and that was two others, and this is the third.
That was Hyannis Village, I think, area?
I believe it was, yeah.
Okay, and this map that shows, they show, you show four on this map, and this is the, kind of the middle one to the right, I believe, is that correct?
Yep.
And they're really, it's the same unit as the ones we saw prior this year?
Correct.
Same, now, the replace, you said a replacement pole, is that an additional pole from the regular?
It will be a replacement pole in the existing pole, everything will be moved over to that pole, and then the old pole will be removed.
So you're removing the old, you're putting in a brand-new pole with...
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Dick?
Been there, done that, I have no problems.
I don't have any questions, either.
I, I think the questions that I had were the only questions that I had. were the only questions that I had. The main question was, was it going to enhance the reception, which I think is very important. I know the police had a big problem with that. A lot of people on the Cape this summer, nobody could dial out, nobody could receive. They were concerned about the ability to receive 911 calls. So I presume this will go to help that.
Definitely.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody in our audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? You have a question?
Just go.
Please go to the lectern and ask your question, sir. Please identify yourself and ask your question.
I'm Brian Quinn. I live on Standish Way across the parking lot.
All right.
Is there a chance that either AT&amp;T and/or other carriers will expand equipment on that pole beyond what's currently proposed?
Yeah, so that, that's a great question. We cannot add any equipment without this board's approval. And there will be no other carriers on this pole. Once AT&amp;T's there, there's just not enough space and for interference issues, there'd be no one else on this pole. And as I say, there's no plans to add any additional equipment, and if they did, you all would have to sign off on it.
That is correct, sir. We would have to do that. And I think it would be highly unlikely that we would allow any additions to this pole. We realize the area, we're all very, very familiar with it down there at the beach. It's not a place really that's suitable, but for an absolute necessity to have that there. But in terms of allowing someone else to piggyback on that or allowing any expansion of that, I, I would not be in support of that. I don't know how the others feel, but.
Is this supporting 5G and other, other wavelengths, or is it just 5G?
No, it's the traditional service and.
The whole spectrum, basically.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Is there anybody in our audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. If you have nothing else to add, I will close the hearing and open it up to board discussion.
That seems consistent with the other ones we've, we've approved this year to try to bring some service to the, the area, so I'm comfortable with it. John, you have thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, a necessity for sure. Is this only for AT&amp;T customers, though? Yeah, right, it's only.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't see any problems.
Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I have no, no problems. Like I said, we've done it before. We had no issues. It's very innocuous. It's not hardly visible at all, and it's, it provides the necessary coverage at all. All, all the residents and visitors like to have, so.
I agree.
No, no problem.
I agree. Okay, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Man, Tony. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes four to zero. Can I expect a draft?
Yes. Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for coming by.
Thank you.
Our next matter is. That is not it. That's the minutes. When I lose here. Here we go, right here, I got it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next matter is Great Island Plaza, petition number 4827 and 4850, located at 606 to 610 Route 28, 590 to 600 and 602 Route 28, 12 Winslow Gray Road. Properties in B2 zoning district, and the petitioner requests extensions for special permits number 4827 dated November 22, 2019, and number 4850 dated September 22, 2020. We have a representative for the petitioner. Please come forward, sir. Yeah, it is. How you doing tonight?
Robert Tavor. I live in Yarmouth, but a kid called Commercial Real Estate. I'm managing the broker for Hyatt Rosenberg, who wrote the letter. She's the owner.
Okay.
Boarding a plane right now. She may be in the audience, but I don't know.
Well, so you're here tonight to ask for an extension on special permits that were granted to you in the past, correct? Okay, and I did read her letter, all right?
She did a great job explaining.
Which I could, but we'll get to that in just a second. The two decisions, just so we're clear. The 2019 decision. One second. You were granted a special permit for 4827 was granted on November 19, 2019. On October 22, 2021, I believe you appeared requesting an extension for the special permit due to Ms. Rosenberg being out of the country and work not yet commenced on the property. The board considered and granted that request. That request would have extended that for an additional two years, okay? The second request that you have is for a special permit that was granted, I believe on this date in 2020. And you're requesting an extension on that one as well?
Correct.
Okay. Special permits are granted for two years. Variants is a granted for one year. So in order to maintain those, if you can't act on them, as you understand, because you've been here in the past, then you must come in within two years to ask for an extension. It appears by review of the record that you're within the timeframe to ask for extensions for those two special permits. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have one, just, just to clarify. I know there's two special permits that are in place. What is, one is for, what's the difference with them? Just in general, do you remember?
It's easier for me to tell you about 606. 606 was a building that burnt down. It wouldn't fit on, it wouldn't be approved at any time period now, I don't think.
To the right of the post office.
So when you have a certain amount of time to replace that.
That's the current empty lot, is that, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plans submitted that have been approved. We've come pretty close a couple of times.
So this is really to bring the two lots together?
Well, no, they're two different special permits.
I recognize that, but.
They're not, they're not trying to bring them together, just trying to extend those special permits to keep their rights to build on them.
It just happened to be with the same owner and happened time out at the same approximate time period.
And you haven't brought any plans on what you were planning on doing, or is that?
They've been approved.
They've been approved.
But proved all these, yeah, special permits already been.
They don't, they don't cross over from one, one lot to the other? It's like two separate buildings, is that what it being?
Well, there were walkways from. And then there was a development of the Great Island Plaza with further development to the rear of that, which those are one special permit, the one to the right of the post office is another, but they're kind of a grand scheme.
Right.
Special permit that was granted. But the only thing that we're here to consider tonight is whether to extend those special permits.
Stan, I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
Actually, I do have one, one question that's, I guess, relevant. The, we'll call the Eastley site, that was just, just cleared apparently for the proposal that was one of the, one of the approvals, right?
That's the back lot. There's a pork chop lot that's next to that that's been cleared. We haven't done any clearing on our site. That's pretty much maintained the way it is.
Oh, so that's the lot in, in back?
Different property. Yeah, there's a, it's pork chop. It comes in tight.
Yeah, I remember now, yeah.
The back.
Okay.
And I think we're supposed to be housing for the longest time, but I haven't seen any progress since they cleared.
A little concerned, a little concerned that the clearing seems to be right up to the house in back there, but that's, that's another story. All right, thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
Not really. It was nice of the owner to, to explain what's going on because that's, you know, it would have been my question, you know, why the delay, but that is pretty self-explanatory, so I don't have any.
Well, if need be, we can read this into the record, but to paraphrase it, due to a number of issues that happened since we last granted it, the major one being COVID, and also some financing and tenant issues by getting tenants, they're unable to proceed right now. And the commercial real estate market may be a little bit flat. So they're really here just to preserve their rights to go forward.
We know this town has dropped from, we've lost two thirds of our business market is gone. So keeping this alive would hopefully help with the septic system and the, you know, sewers that's coming.
And so hopefully they, I don't know if you've seen the plan, but if you have a chance, I don't think we have it here, but maybe we have it in a big packet, or maybe I have it right here as a matter of fact, it ran inside there. But it's quite a nice plan. We certainly hope that someday you will develop that.
For lack of effort. We would assure you, not from lack of effort.
No.
I guess, do you think within the next two years, if you get two years' extension, that that'll be, you'll have started by then, or?
I think I need a break in order for something to happen. I don't know where it's going to come from, but that's why we tried to grant a blight grant. We're searching any avenue. It's extremely difficult to build in this market for Yarmouth because our rents don't pay what you need to spend on per square foot. So when you're at $300 per foot construction, and I've heard people say even higher, you need 20 some odd dollars a foot to pay that mortgage and that interest. So Yarmouth is more like 12, 14, that type of range. You can get 18 maybe next to the supermarket or something. But nobody's breaking that 20, 24, 26, 28, except for somebody like Starbucks or one of these companies that their math is really good and they know exactly what they'll do.
And with interest rates going up, it's more of a challenge.
It's more of a challenge because obviously the banks want a little higher interest rates, which gives you less buying power.
Right.
But we have dropped the price a couple of times. So enough, again, not from lack of effort.
Yeah.
We are looking for partners. We have an offer on the table right now that we're negotiating. We've got a couple of other people looking. So we are investigating options, and I've even said, can we get 40B in the back as a little bit of help? Help promote the fund, you know what I mean? Because we, we just talked about this. The housing market is awful.
Yeah.
So housing in the back, so we, we're working as many angles as we possibly can to try to get this thing going.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Only if you're going to vote against it.
Any feedback from the public? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. All right, we're going to close the hearing to the public, open it up for board discussion. Gentlemen?
I'd really, I'd really like to see it developed, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an area that really could use it, so. Keep it, keep it open, I think, just so we can hopefully someday figure it out.
And, and in the past, we have had petitioners that have come to us requesting extensions of this special permit, but for one reason or another, they weren't able to develop it within the timeframe. And, you know, we generally look for good cause. I think this is certainly good cause here to approve this. So I would urge the board to approve the extensions.
Do you think we have a limitation on how many extensions, or is there any, any reason not to?
No, just every, if you don't.
Listen each time.
If you don't extend, you just got to make sure you come back within the two years. If you don't, you have to file a new application and come back and do it all over again.
Just made it, okay.
Just made it. So is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve special, the request first, under special permit 4827 and 4850 for an extension for two years from, what from date, what date would that be from, I guess? Well, from their appropriate.
It will be two years.
Years from two different dates, apparently.
Let I file it with the clerk.
Oh, okay, two years from now, okay, so.
Actually, excuse me, I think we're not doing that. It's a two-year extension. We don't need, it's going to be two years from today.
Yeah, yeah, so two years from today, then.
Yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Work that up and good luck. And tell Ms. Rosenberg we send our regards.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next matter on our petition is petition number 4984 to Buttercup Lane Realty Trust, care of Wayne Tavars, Wet Tech Land Design Incorporated. The property location is to Buttercup Lane, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in the R40 zoning district, and the applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 subsection 2 and/or variance from section 203.5 for side setback relief to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Mr. Tavars, are you on the line with us?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see him on the Zoom, but I do see the property owner, Alexander.
You see the property owner?
He's on the Zoom, Alexander.
Okay. Whoever on the line, could you identify yourself, please?
Hello, are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Alexander Nemennov. I own the property for, on the Two Buttercup Line, South Yarmouth. We try to, we try with my wife to build a new house because existing, it's like a.
Sir, could I stop you for a moment?
Yeah.
I need to ask you, do you have a video? We can see you.
Oh. I, I.
You on a telephone or you on a computer?
I, I'm on the telephone.
And what, you're on a what?
I am on the telephone. I'm on the phone.
You're on the telephone?
Yes.
You see the lower right hand, or lower left hand corner? Do you have a little video button that's got a cross, a little red thing across it? Okay, that's your microphone. You just muted yourself. Unmute that.
Okay, yeah, I found.
Now, babe, okay, there you go.
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
And, and who are you, sir?
I'm Alexander Nemennov. I own the property on, on the Two Buttercup Line, South Yarmouth.
I can't understand what he's saying.
Alexander, the owner is Alexander something.
That's not who I have here. I have the owner as. Hold on a second here.
Buttercup Lane Realty Trust, which is apparently Mr. Nemennov.
Well. Second, sir, just for one moment.
Wayne Tavars is the engineer, apparently.
Yeah. Do we have a trustee certificate with this?
No.
Just the quick claim deed. Sir, what relationship do you have with Buttercup Realty Trust?
Well, I'm, I'm trustee, yes, is it correct? Sorry, it's not my, it's not my first language issue. It's my second language, just so I, I will try to do my best to talk with you. I vote this.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Are you the owner of the property?
Yes, correct.
You're the owner of the property, okay. Well, let, let me just, let me just stop you here for one second.
Okay.
The original presenter here was Wayne Tavars. For purposes of full disclosure, Wayne Tavars is a relative of mine by marriage. And I was not going to be able to sit for this hearing because I think I would have had a conflict if he were the presenter. Now, you're the presenter, so you're going to present this tonight?
Well, I, I don't, I, I don't have any experience to, to represent, but I could try to explain some thoughts, what we have.
Well, I, I think there's an issue of whether, I, he may not be here for purposes, and I don't know if he's here. If he's not presenting, I could hear this. If he is presenting, I would have to recuse myself.
What do we do with him? I have three.
Right now, he's not presenting. Right now, he's not presenting, however, the only, but let's, let's see what we can get done here right now, while we have you on the line. Okay? But just so we're clear, you're the owner of this property? You, you muted yourself again.
Okay. Can you hear us? Sir? You're muted, just in case you can hear us.
Can he hear us? Is he muted? Does he have?
We have some problem on, we setback on the left side.
Hold on, wait a second.
House, you could see it on the site plan. That's why we are here. And actually, Wayne, would like to discuss you to go with like a, to, like a, to have from you a permit, like approval with all setback rules. That's why we are here.
Okay. Are you the, are you the owner of the property?
Gentlemen, are you hearing me?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Excuse me.
Sir, can you hear me? Back off, okay. All right, can you hear me, sir?
Hello?
You're muted again.
Are you hearing me? Excuse me.
We can't hear you, sir.
I don't hear.
What are you showing, Dolores?
It doesn't appear that he's muted, but we cannot hear him.
Wait, I don't hear you.
Well, we're hearing you again now.
We were.
Are you folks here for this petition, by the way? You are, okay.
Can we hear public opinion?
He's dropped completely now.
Well, he's, well, okay.
He's back.
He's back.
He's back. Can you hear us, sir?
Hello, sorry, I think it was some disconnection, some problem with.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you right now.
Okay, I need you to answer this question either yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, are you the owner of the property?
Yes, I'm, I own this property.
Okay, very good. That's all I needed to know. Okay. So you're here tonight, as I understand your petition, you're asking for a special permit?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And you're going to knock down the house that you have right now, and you're going to build a new house?
Correct.
And today, we did receive some elevations showing the style house. Is this the style house that you're going to put on the lot? Did everybody get those?
Yes, I would like to put like same, same style, what you see on the elevation plan.
All right. What I don't see is, I don't see a site plan that shows exactly where your foundation is going to be. Do you have that?
Yes, I have that, and also I sent it to Dolores yesterday.
The site plan.
And actually today, too.
That's a conservation.
But the blue, the blue line is the house.
Is this a small version of that?
There's another one.
Standby for one, just one second, sir.
Actually, there's two different ones.
Sure.
This is different.
There's three different ones.
Okay.
Okay. What do you, where did you get that big one? Do I have a big one?
That was in my packet.
I don't have one either. I have the small versions. I think it's the same as this small one.
Well, it's where we're actually looking at the blue line here. It's not the same as either of these, actually.
No, no. One of them, I believe, was the, one of us is a planned schedule. This is more for the conservation commission, I think.
But why are there two different ones? So which one they doing?
One, what, what you need is, you see this one right here? You see this stamp right here?
Yep.
This shows you, this is certified, that shows you exactly where the foundation is going to be. Do you?
That's the existing dwelling.
Right. They don't have one for the proposed dwelling. These are, I believe, were submitted to the conservation commission.
Right.
And they have been through conservation. They've been approved through conservation.
All right.
Both of these are done by Wet Tech.
Yes.
I, I guess one thing I'd ask is, if this is the outline of what they're planning on doing, don't they also need a variance? Because they're going to be closer.
Well, I think before we consider the form of relief they need, we need to see exactly where the foundation's going to be.
Agreed.
So would you be able to get us a site plan showing exactly where the foundation's going to be and have that stamped by an engineer?
Yes, how, how I can show it to you?
Okay, because I think we're going to need that before we can make a decision on approving your proposal.
Could, could, could I ask you, sir? Yeah, yesterday, do we have a, like, elevation plan? We're rendering on the house.
We, we saw, we, we saw yesterday, we received.
What's the question, Sean? Just, did you hear? I couldn't hear.
He's asking if we received this right here yesterday.
Actually, actually, yesterday I sent like a, like a plan. Yes, it was a site plan, what was approved to.
We are looking at a plan here.
To conservation, with, with the existing house and the new house, and actually with, with plan with basement, too. What was approved with the house department two days ago.
Yeah.
It was Linda Pente, what she, she represented to us on the house department. And actually, she provides them like a, a new plan with, with the basement.
All right, let me, let me, where's my memos here? Got all my paperwork all messed up. I'll get it. I have time. Oh, there's my script.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple, maybe more comments than anything else.
But Joe, if you could stand by just one second, Dick, and then I'm going to let the board have a full opportunity to make any comments relative to any concerns that they may have. Dolores, can you help me out here? Where's that memo I have from the Board of Health? I know that got emailed over. Is there a copy of that?
This one?
Okay. Let me just read this into the record right here for you, sir.
Okay.
This is a memo from the Conservation Administrator. It says that their June 16, 22 meeting, the Conservation Commission continued the notice of intent hearing from 217, 22, 32, 22, 317, 22, 47, 22, 421, 22, 55, 22, and 519, 22, for a raise and replace of a single-family dwelling with new septic landscape and mitigation within the riverfront area buffer zone and coastal bank and buffer zone to Anne-Sault-March. At the hearing, Wayne Tavares described all the changes that were requested from the previous meeting. These changes included a description of mitigated areas and plants, the fact that the house itself is smaller in square footage, and it's outside the 35-foot buffer zone, and that several dead trees will be removed with hollies being planted in their place. DEP commented and spelled out two conditions. See letter on file. We don't have that letter. He stated that the current structure is uninhabitable. The septic system will be upgraded, and everything is being removed from the no-build zone. The commission decided to issue an order of conditions with special conditions, including the two outlined by DEP. I don't have the two outlined by DEP. That may or may not affect our decision. I don't think it will. That usually is something that's going to be within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, which is outside of our purview, which are really setbacks. And those really have to do with, as shown on these plans that were submitted. So when you're going to do a raise and replace, and you're, this house is uninhabitable, and you're going to tear this house down, correct, sir?
Correct.
Yes, okay, okay. And you want to build a house that, which you're showing right here, what I have in front of me, are some elevations. What they do not show, however, is where it will be exactly on the lot as represented by either a certified land surveyor or an engineer. So we would need that before we could make a decision on that. Do you have a set of working blueprints? Because we don't know how many bedrooms, I don't believe, you're going to put in this house. We need to do that.
It was, it was approved free bedroom on this house.
Okay.
Free bedroom.
Do you have, do you have floor plans that go with this elevations right here?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I, I sent it to Dolores yesterday.
Well, I have the elevations. Do we receive, do we receive floor plans with this, too?
Yeah, I know. Dolores didn't ask me about to send to her, like, foot, footprint, like, like some footprint, but I, I sent it to her by, by mistake. And actually, she have it. I could resend it to you right now if it's.
Our administrative assistant has indicated to us that you did send in some floor plans, and she's going to print those out to us right now, so we can take a look at those. Okay?
Thank you, yeah.
Why don't you just stand by for just a second?
Okay.
So, gentlemen, what we have here is we have some elevations. I think we're going to get some floor plans. What we don't have is we don't have a site plan that's going to show where this house is going to be located.
I've, I've got three site plans. I don't know what, which one we're talking about.
Those are a site plan that could be submitted to the building department.
A septic plan, one.
And, and I would like to see.
They're all septic plans, I guess.
Yeah, this is a, this is actually, well.
An approved site plan?
That's the latest plan.
What's the date on this?
Small one by CS, CSN Engineering.
Doesn't have a stamp on it.
It's had a date of, I lost it.
I think it says 222, 1122.
Oh, is that '02? Okay.
Excuse me, could I, could I share with you my screen just to show, to confirm, do you have a same plan? What I showed to you and sent to Dolores yesterday, or you have a different one?
We're just waiting right now. We're going to get the floor plan. She's printing it out right now. So just stand by for one second. We're just looking at what you have in your packet right here. CSN Brewster Mans. Proposed sewage disposal system. Well.
They all seem to have the sewage on them, yeah.
This is a, this is a sewage plan.
Septic plan.
That was used for conservation as well, apparently.
Well, actually, but for the stamp, this is a, this is a site plan. I don't know if. So 22. It's so small, I'm having a hard time. Can anybody?
I think it is.
I think it's 15, 4 on the front setback. Let's see existing house here. This one right here, this is, this, see, this is what we need right here, so we can all see it.
Yep. 14, 3 is the current front corner.
14, 3 is the front corner, so, does anybody see anything on that that's less than 14, 3?
Which one are you looking at?
This, this one.
Okay. The front of it, it looks like it's 18, 4. Pretty consistent.
Well, I've got 15.
18, 3. I don't have spyglass, I can't tell. I'm seeing 18, 3, 18, 4.
18, 5.
I mean, I don't, I'm having trouble even figuring out where the law line is.
I'm assuming.
I guess it's the big black line on this one, and the biggest black line there. So Buttercup Lane, in terms of the traveled way, is way off the road layout, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm seeing 18, 3 is the closest in the front.
So they're looking for front setback relief as well, then I would gather.
Well, they have, yeah, they're, right now, they're setback 14, 3 on the existing house. So.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, maybe, Mr. Chairman, you might be able to answer for me, because I've forgotten some of this. But my historical understanding, looking at these plans, it shows building envelope and so forth, and it's showing that is a 10-foot sideline setback. It's my understanding on a raise and replace, you have to start with what it, what the present zoning is now, not what it was when the house was built, or the, the house is being torn now, it was built. So this is an R40 district, which will require 20-foot sideline setbacks, not the 10 feet that are shown, as well as the 30 feet in the front, which we're missing as well. Also, you, unless I'm crazy as well, I don't believe, I believe this is a historic district as well. I think everything North Route sticks, unless they've changed something I don't know about. Yeah. And.
You've gone before the Historic Commission with this plan?
Because you'll need to do that, too. And I think you're going to have trouble with this particular house plan that I'm looking at with historic.
Wow, well, I never hear about this is historical.
Let me see what you've got here.
Well, I don't know. If you could open like Google Mint and see how the house looks. In my mind, it's not a historical, but I, 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 I'm not a professional, I'm not like a, someone who work on that site.
Can't hear you.
All right. Okay. So it looks like we've got an 11-foot setback on the left side of the lot. I don't see any setback for the right. That's the only one I see on that plan.
On the right, I see 22, 7 on this one. That's right.
Oh, you're looking at that again. I was looking at these floor plans. So, okay, what, let me see what you got here.
Oh, is that what I have right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, 22.7 on the right side, 11 point something zero, I guess, on the left side.
Raise and replace, so let's, let's look at the bylaw. Okay, you're under 104.3.2.2. Throw it here. Hold on here. We're also looking at 104.3.2 subsection B. Okay? And actually, all of, it says, for purposes of this section, any alteration or extension of such a structure, which will remain within the existing footprint and height of the structure. Okay? Or raise and replace, which meets the current minimum setbacks, which this does not, and does not exceed the current maximum building height and current maximum building coverage requirements, shall be presumed not to be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. What, what happens here is, if you were staying within your footprint, you would presume that it wasn't an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, aka the Martin bylaw. Okay? For all of us who know that, okay? The author is sitting right down the, the bench here, the table. However, when you go to raise and replace, all right, then it talks about meeting the current minimum setbacks, and forget about building height, because right now, I don't. and forget about building height, cuz right now, I don't think we're exceeding building height, as I looked at that. But you don't meet the minimum setback, so it's not presumed to be, to be not substantially more non-conforming. So, we have to make a determination whether, what is being proposed here, and I, I can see what you wanna do. I'm not sure if we have all the dimensions we need, but I can see what you wanna do, whether that, in fact, is substantially more non-conforming than what was sitting there right now. And so, that's what we have to find. Otherwise, we look at variance criteria. I think I think we can look at this, uh.
I, I think we, I, I at least would look at this as substantially more non-conforming than the present structure, especially with the, uh, house going closer to the lot line on the, uh, west of the east side than the present structure.
Well, that right there would, yeah, that, that would be prima facie evidence that it would do that. Now, whether that's such, well, it's certainly more non-conforming, but whether we make a determination that it's substantially, to the extent that we don't meet the criteria, maybe we'll just have a discussion about that.
Is it, is it been abandoned? Cuz it's also the abandoned.
It's uninhabitable right now, they said, but let's just presume nobody's living in there, but, um, but, but this is, this is what we need. This is certainly what I need. I need a site plan that's stamped by an engineer. Is this the biggest copy that we have of that right there?
Yes.
He told me, I do, I can.
This notice over here is not legible. We need something that looks just like this, that shows your septic plan. It shows exactly, now, you could, you could probably just call up your engineer and say, hey, stamp this thing for me and send it over to us.
Yeah, well, actually, actually, both of engineer, like a septic engineer and, uh, and Wayne on vacation right now, and I probably, I thought both of them will be with, uh, with us.
Let, let, let me make a suggestion here.
Yeah.
We need you to get this, okay? And since you're the, you're presenting tonight, when we leave here, you can have somebody contact Dolores, whoever that may be.
Okay.
Speak to Dolores about what we're gonna need, alright? We're gonna need this stamped a, a larger size to scale, alright, something that we can look at, that's stamped by an engineer, that shows exactly where this foundation's gonna be. I think it's gonna be exactly where he said it is, the problem is he didn't stamp it. We need a stamp on this. We also need to see well, I'd like a bigger set of plans than what you have here, okay? I, I see we, I mean, you really did, you sent us something here, the plan that you wanna put on the house, okay? Has this septic design been to the Board of Health yet?
Yes, today ago.
Cuz I don't see Board of Health approval, that's not our, that's not our, really, our purview, so we could approve something, if it gets shot down by the Board of Health, that's another issue in and of itself, but I'm just.
Yeah.
Okay. And finally, we could approve something, but you could go to the Old Kings Highway Historic District, which appears that this falls into their jurisdiction, and they won't let you build this plan, cuz it doesn't conform to what their requirements are. So, before you get too far ahead with us, I would take this over to the Historical Commission and fill out an application and submit it to them and get their approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Got it, yeah.
We can look at this, and we could approve it, but if all of a sudden you go over there and they say no, and you gotta get a brand-new plan and come back, then you just came to us, went over there, they said no, you had to do what they said, and then come back to us, so you gotta come back to us a couple times. You might be better off doing that. I mean, I don't mind considering this, if you want us to go forward on this. We can't do that tonight, we could do that on, we have our next hearing date?
October 27.
October 27.
Too long.
We can give you that date, we need this information from you.
Okay.
And then we would consider this petition at that point, but we need the stamped engineer of the, uh, where the foundation's gonna be, with all of the setbacks located. You've got the height of the foundation, I, I think this is all you need, we know what top of foundation's gonna be. Uh, this shows, we wanna see the elevations on the lot, but this should all contain it, if this was blown up, we could probably do that, and have an engineer stamp.
Okay.
It would work.
Got it, got it, yeah.
I want you to get us a larger set of these building, uh, plans that you have here, so we have those.
Okay.
Okay? So, if you get those two, but I would check with Historic, because I think you may have a problem given the design that you wanna do, we're not saying that it's not a nice design. What we're saying is, is that it may not meet what the historic standards are and requirements.
Okay.
Look into that.
And, and I may also add that you, uh, I think you need to amend the request too, which calls for sideline setback relief, yeah. Uh, I believe you need front yard setback relief as well, so.
I, I think, yeah, I think, I think you're going to need front and sideline setback relief. Yeah. Because you had one corner that was 14 feet, but now you've got the entire length of the house, which is only 15 feet setback, or 18?
It needs to come under, under my.
Unless.
Needs to come under abandonment. It's also under abandonment, and it's also needs to come under the present zoning bylaws, which is 30-foot. Should be 30 feet from the street.
It should be 30 feet, the only way that they would get around that is if they're setback averaging, if the other houses.
Uh, the house to the left is a big mansion on a huge piece of land way back, so that's.
So, that's, that would probably wouldn't, so, the one on either side, yeah. So, um, and, well, when we look at this, uh, well, you've asked for special permit.
Some additional work.
Yeah, yeah, you do, you, you, you need to, uh, what, what did they ask for relief? Let me just look at the, let me just look at the petition. Special permit, side setback relief to raise and replace. Is it too, is it too late to re-advertise that for the next hearing?
What do you mean? No.
It's not too late.
It may need to be changed and therefore.
See, I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting they're gonna need front setback relief too, it's not, it's not advertised. Could we re-advertise that for them? Okay. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have Dolores, and you're gonna have to have somebody call in and talk to her, and, uh, or we can email, whatever we're gonna do. But we're gonna need to just, uh, amend your application or the, uh, legal notice to include a request for front setback relief too. So, we're gonna, we're gonna help you with that.
Okay.
You know what we need, right? We need the site plan stamped, right?
Yes.
Showing the foundation where it's gonna go, all your setbacks. We need a working set of plans that show the heights of the, and the layout and all that, which you gave us, but they're a little small, we want bigger size.
Okay.
And then, lastly, I think you should immediately contact the Historical Commission and see what their requirements are, and submit that over to them, to make sure you're not, uh, you're gonna be able to do this. Okay?
Yes, okay.
And, just stand by here, uh, folks, I know you've been waiting patiently here. You have an interest in this matter? Would you like to be heard on this tonight?
Yes.
Okay, stand by, so, we got some people here in the audience, we're You don't wanna hear right now, okay? Okay, you heard what we're gonna do here, right? Okay. And if there's anything that you wanna see, you can always come down to the Board of Appeals office and see Dolores here. She's the best person in the building, that's all I'm told.
Yeah, I know.
And she'll let you look at all of that, if you wanna look at the plans or anything like that, okay?
Okay.
That's, that's mostly what people are concerned, what's gonna be built there and what it looks like, and I don't know if you've seen it or not, okay?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, so, what, we're gonna continue this matter to October 27?
Yes, correct.
You think? He's gonna go.
He's got to go, get out his engineer and get that thing.
He's gotta go Historic.
Oh, he's not gonna go to Historic before that, I mean.
Yeah.
He probably should do that before.
Sorry, Gump's here.
Cuz I think he's gonna have some issues there.
Yeah.
Why don't you, I tell you what, we're gonna put you on the next agenda, alright?
Okay.
Go to the Historic Commission and talk to them.
Yeah, I will do it on the beginning of next week, next week.
You can get some feedback from them as to, you know, what you wanna do here, alright?
Yeah, I, I got it.
Hold on here, wait, wait. If you go over to the Historic Commission, and they tell you that we're not gonna accept this plan, and you have to do another plan, let us know, and we can move you to a new date, so you can get a plan that they're that they're gonna, uh, approve.
Sure.
Okay?
Yes.
They are, right, they're not south of Route 6, are they? How's Route 6 run there? That, that's definitely North Route 6.
I had to drive over.
Alright, and, alright, we're correct on that. Alright, so what we're gonna do then is, we're gonna continue this matter over into October 27, and be in contact with Dolores here, and, uh, we'll see if we can get this thing wrapped up on the 27th for you, okay?
Okay, sir.
Alright, have a good night now.
Have a good night, bye. Thank you.
Do we have to grant a continuance and vote on it, or what?
Uh, yes, and is there a motion? We'll, we'll, we're gonna grant it anyway, so probably should.
A motion to grant the continuance.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to continue this matter to October 27, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Alright, this matters continue to October 27.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes. Make a motion.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, March 24th, 2022, and September 8th, 2022.
Okay, half a second on that.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor to approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We approve the minutes. Anything further on the agenda tonight?
Approve the, or talk about the timetable or anything like that, or just accept it?
It's gonna be approved, but.